We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or group, and they may have five minutes. And I think, I guess, Mr. Paul, you're the timekeeper today?
Okay, awesome. Okay, appealing decision of the historic zoning commission pursuant to the provisions of Section 2468.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision in the historic zoning commission. First, I'd like to have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, last month's meeting minutes are approved. So first, we'll do the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Okay?
Okay. The items on the consent agenda include 2405 Belmont Boulevard, application for partial demolition and new construction of an addition; 3618 Richland Avenue, application for partial demolition and new construction of an addition; 1419 Calvin, application for infill and a detached accessory dwelling unit. In addition, they're looking for setback determination; 1714 Fourth Avenue North, that's an application for demolition; 1905 Fatherland, application for an addition; 2534 Ashwood is an application for an addition; 123 Blackburn Avenue is an application for an addition; 1608 Douglas, also an application for an addition; 3517 Richland Avenue is an application for an addition and a setback determination; and finally, 1511 Ferguson Avenue, application for partial demolition and new construction of an addition. Staff finds that all of these items meet their respective design guidelines and recommends approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Open public hearing before we vote on these, or any of these that you'd like to take off of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, consent agenda. Okay, previously deferred items, is there anything there?
We don't have any previously deferred. And then the first item on MHCC Actions 128 Second Avenue has been removed from the agenda.
Okay.
So we'll start with 1403 Elmwood.
All right, thank you.
1403 Elmwood Avenue, this is an application for a setback determination to build a port cochere onto the side of this non-contributing home in Belmont Hillsborough overlay. The proposed addition would be one foot and six inches from the side property line seen here, instead of the required five feet side setback. There are examples of port cocheres in the district that are less than five feet from the side property line, but staff's review is that the conditions of the site do not warrant a determination of the setback, and staff recommends disapproval of the request. And the applicant is here with their own presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thanks, Paul. The applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Kobalik. I live at 1403 Elmwood Avenue. I'm a builder. I have been living there for 13 years. I built the house. It's a little bit of a unique situation. All I kept was the front porch and the four columns. We basically tore a page out of the 1910 Sears catalog and built the Castleton, which pretty much is what that house looks like. The footprint of the house is 32 feet, which makes it slightly narrower than the building envelope. It's always had a driveway off of Elmwood to the right-hand side. We've got a couple of conditions that even make this possible. One, it was built after the overlay, or before the overlay, and Paul, in our meeting, had brought up or noted that this might not even be possible if it had been built after the overlay was instituted. We also have a few issues. Elmwood Avenue is very close to 12th. I'm in between 15th and 12th Avenue. Some obvious parking issues as a result of what is happening on 12th Avenue. Can't ever park in front of my house. I have, the property line is basically right where the tree, the hackberry tree, is, the property line is, that tree is just on my neighbor's property. And obviously, I have seven hackberry trees around my property. It's a lot of issues with bird droppings, trees falling, little berries. Also, my house is the lowest point between 12th and Belmont. So when we, the storm sewer drain is further to the left. When there is a lot of rain and water, and obviously, May 2010, the water drains right down my driveway. So there's a couple of conditions there that a port cochere would be really nice for my wife and daughter to be able to park underneath. And I've got a couple of examples. Paul, I'm assuming this is?
Yeah.
Sure. I also have some handouts. Do you want to give these to you? They're just basic pictures.
Okay. Are these what we're going to also see in the PowerPoint presentation?
It is, yes. I didn't know how we'd be set up, so we just, we figured the PowerPoint and a brief handout.
Okay, thanks.
So I've talked with all my neighbors, and there's some signatures, my neighbors on both sides, and all the way around, up and down the street, everybody's down with it. So I just walked through the neighborhood with my cellphone, and I took some quick pictures. The first one's at 1401 Sweetbrier. Most of these homes, I believe, are considered to be historic. I don't know that that's much of an issue. And the other, the other condition that I have, which is a little bit different, is the house next, there's no home next door. To me, it's a vacant lot. I don't know that it's ever been developed. There's no water meter, as far as I know, so I think it's an undeveloped lot since the beginning of time, I guess. But, you know, I don't know, my neighbor has no plans to sell it or build on it. So there's another unique situation. But the first house is 1401 Sweetbrier. And we can go through pretty quick. Sweetbrier's, you know, basically a block away. Linden's a block away. This is closer to Belmont. 1505 Elmwood is a house four doors down from me. I just got done renovating that house. We sold it in November of last year. 1401 is the house next door to me, which I renovated about 14 years ago. It was slated for demolition. Roof had caved in, had been vacant for years. It had a port cochere. Obviously, it had caved in, and there were two stone columns that were left. They were falling over. We put the columns back and added an oak arbor. Since the house has been sold, I think a year ago, they now are turning what was a port cochere, then an arbor, back into a port cochere. That's directly next door to me. Belmont Boulevard, 2504, couple of doors down, 2512. And then there's also one on Paris, 1517 Paris. So those are some basic examples of port cocheres that go directly to the property line. And, you know, to make it useful, it's a very tight space. It's great if we could get, you know, up to 18 inches to the property line. And you can see in the drawings that, I think Paul had submitted to you guys, that Michael at Allard Ward had drawn, that it's still pretty tight, but it does work. And it would help me to change the elevation of my yard slightly, which would help significantly with drainage. And I might be able to get rid of a hackberry tree that's on my neighbor's property, which eventually is going to fall on my house if we don't do something. I've been maintaining it for the entire time that I've lived there. It's cabled together now, but it literally is two hackberries that have grown together. Then it eventually is going to fall. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that the neighbor who said that you could cut down his tree? Is that the same?
That's Paul McRedmond, yes. He's a great neighbor. I never see him.
And he's okay about you taking his area too?
Paul is completely happy with me taking care of his property and his trees at my cost.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Ben looks like he's, not yet, okay. How about you? Anybody else? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this case? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
We did a very minimal, I think there may be a picture of it in these examples, of a port cochere that was maybe a similar situation where staff was not in favor of it, but I recall one within the last couple of years that we allowed on the side of a house. Has anybody else recalled that?
I do, too. I think, and even in, it was further back, and I think that was part of the decision-making. But it also was, if I recall, a contributing home, whereas I guess we're considering this one not contributing. Is that right? I don't know if that's relevant or not, that distinction, but there's some similarities.
There are, but there's one distinct, and I don't know that it's entirely distinct from all of these examples. It appears that it is, that the applicant presented, but this port cochere element, and I think it's a function of the site constraints, is the forwardmost thing on the home.
Forwardmost.
And so in that case, it is, its dominance is greater than if it were further back. I mean, that's pretty apparent, I think, from looking at it, but seeing the site plan and an elevation that may not be, an elevation that may not point that out nearly as much as the plan does, and it certainly is a function of how tall this porch is relative to where the grade is and so forth, but we need to be, I wanted to point that out, and as we consider this, I think that's an important item that would perhaps make it different or distinguishable from some of the examples given and what we've done in the more recent past.
And the one that you referred to earlier that we had discussed, I'm not so sure the setback was encroached on as much as this.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, but I know it was really close. I think it was really close to the property line.
I guess I'd like to ask the staff to clarify your recommendation of disapproval. You did mention that there are other examples of port cocheres, even on historic structures. Do any of those, are any of those closer than the typical five feet? And then also, could you, just help us understand your recommendation of disapproval? And then could you also talk to us a little bit about, and I'm sorry, I don't remember this very well, so I need you all to help me, the policy that we created to guide ourselves on setback determinations? And there's mention in the staff report that there is no hardship here, and I didn't think we had to have a hardship to make a determination. I thought it was more about the context and the guidelines. Could you help me there, Paul? Thanks.
As far as the examples that the applicant presented, several of them are closer than five feet. I'll just go through them. 1401 Sweetbrier is actually not in the overlay, it's in that little notch that's not, I mean, it's in the neighborhood, but it's just not technically in the overlay. That one is, I think, four or five feet from the side, so it's close. 1607 Linden is two or three feet away.
Is this in order? Sorry, we don't have the address.
Oh, okay, sure, I'll, I can show you that. So this is the one that, although it's a nearby home, it's not technically in the overlay. I walked that off. It's maybe five feet from the property line, four or five feet. 160, I think it's actually 1607 Linden is this house. This port cochere is about three feet from that property line. 1505 Elmwood, which was a recent approval by the commission in 2013, this replaced another carport or another side addition. This is maybe a foot away from the side property line. 1401, the neighbor, was an existing side addition or side porch previously, so this was the same footprint. This is and was about two feet off that sideline. 2504 Belmont, I think this one is eight or nine feet away from the property line. 2512, this setback was approved at three feet in 2011 by the commission. There was an existing two-story side addition here. It was not as wide as the port cochere there that was approved, but it is also farther back, as Commissioner Mosley mentioned, with its visibility. Paris, this was also an existing port cochere that was redone recently. That's about three feet from the property line. And this one on 2401 Belmont was done prior to the overlay. That's a very wide lot, and I think it still is about five or six feet off the side property line, so a few of these meet the setbacks. Most of the others are, were built on existing additions or side porches or port cocheres.
And then, again, if you could expound on staff's recommendation of, for disapproval, and then, and our policy, and our policy around setback determinations.
The policy is on page three, and this is something that you came up with a few years ago, 2007, I think, or, you know, about four years ago, on how you're going to, or when you would allow for some type of change in the setback. And we didn't see that this particular situation fit any of these instances. I know with one of the ones that we've looked at today, the neighbor told the neighbor who wanted the port cochere that they were, they were fine with it encroaching into the setback area, because they're neighbors. And I've had many people tell me this about other projects, but in truth, they're not happy with it. And, or they sign a petition, and then they come to me later and say, "I didn't want to sign that petition, but I want to be a good neighbor." And we assume that the commission is going to uphold their rules and guidelines and protect us in that way. I don't, I'm not saying that's the case here, I don't know. But I'm just saying, as staff, we looked at this policy, didn't find that it fit the policy, and so recommended disapproval.
Is it on page three?
That's right. Under setback and rhythm of spacing. It's italicized information, because it's not part of the guidelines, it was a policy that you set separately, but we want to, you know, try to keep all that kind of information together, so people don't have to look in multiple places.
Robin, does the property have alley access?
Yes.
Go ahead. I was just about to see if there's any other thoughts about it.
I guess I'd just say, I think there's sort of three things to grapple with. One is what Ben already pointed out, that it's, it's really forward and prominent relative to a lot of the other examples, but there are historic ones in this package, as far as I can tell, that are also as forward as the porch. But there is alley access, so there's another option for covered parking. And when you look at the aerial, I mean, when we're thinking about rhythm and spacing, there's a whole nother platted lot here in between, so I don't think it's a problem for rhythm and spacing unless until something else gets built. And with these, with the property lines of rhythm and spacing, it's kind of a race to the sideline oftentimes, and once this is built, this property next door, and it sounds like the owner's fine with it, and whether he understands this or not, his building envelope will now be smaller in order to, you would think, in order to maintain the rhythm and spacing if this goes in. So I think with those factors, it kind of cuts a few different ways. I don't know where I land exactly, but those are, for what it's worth, the three things I'm trying to synthesize to see whether this is something that makes sense.
Aaron, I agree with your first two comments. I mean, I think the second one is, I don't know that a port cochere that's appropriately done, which might mean pushing it back, but would necessarily suggest that the primary house on an adjacent lot should be any further away from, than the base zoning allows. You know, I think the fact that it has alley access, you know, is there currently, there is a driveway already, already there and a curb cut?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right. It's not that the house is being built a foot and a half off. It's, it's a different kind of element of the structure, certainly.
And then, you know, with the neighbor's consent, I mean, we can't predict what's going to happen later in terms of the neighbor's opinion. We can just go on the letter that they sent us. Generally, I don't have really a problem with this. I think Ben's point that it sticks out in front of the house was my first concern. You do see some other examples similar to that, so, you know, I don't think it's going to really affect the massing and spacing of the streetscape. We don't have anyone here opposed to it, and lots of neighbors signed that they are in support, so I suppose with that, I will make a recommendation.
Make a motion?
Or a motion to approve the application as submitted. Since that's different than staff recommendation, do I need to further my explanation, or does the record of my explanation?
If you would explain how these guidelines in the policy.
Great. Let me, let me, let me scroll back to the, probably page three. Yeah, page three.
Would you like page three here?
Yeah, could you hand me page three?
I'll have you page three.
I had to dig up this old laptop before. with port cocheres at or near the front porch, and that sit closer than five feet to the side property line.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. I thought you were about to discuss, are you? I've been on this board too long now, I see this.
I see some, I'm in agreement that there are historic examples, certainly, and they're closer to the property line than the guidelines and/or certainly the base zoning setback would allow, but I think in my looking at this, even though it's a nonhistoric example, were this to come in as it's presented here without extenuating site circumstances that the owner has, or that the applicant has spoken about, having the port cochere being the most forward, it's got a front-facing gable, and it's the most prominent, it becomes the most prominent thing, or certainly a very prominent thing, maybe not the most, depending on your perspective and how you look at it. It becomes a very prominent element to the front, and I don't see, the other examples that are cited are a continuation of a porch, or there's another more forward element to the home. And I think that is, that, it's a matter of 18 inches towards the front, but I think architecturally, the way that it's treated, I find, that to me is a hard hurdle to overcome, and it's less about the fact that there's a port cochere, and it is in line with the fact, that those 18 inches, and especially the execution with the forward-facing gable, you know, it's maybe an appropriate way to terminate it architecturally, but to me, that makes it a more prominent thing, and I don't, I don't find other examples of that, even in the ones that are presented, that it takes on the kind of significance that I think this one, as constructed, will.
Is that a motion to amend the motion?
That'd be difficult. That was just discussion. I think to amend it and push it back, there's some, it appears to me there's a really small car shown in the site plan, and the door swings into some stairs that are pushed back well into the porch. I mean, it's, it's a tough sell, no matter how you go about it, so I just.
I think that's a fair motion to amend it, unless you want to rescind it, but we probably would want to give a, you know, dimension to push it back if that's the case, if you want to, if you want a motion to amend it, or if you want to rescind it. We're about to get into all the parliamentary things.
I don't, I wouldn't ask him for rescension or necessarily a motion that was called for discussion, and that was, I'm just simply pointing that out as my personal feeling.
Well, I could agree with that, if anybody else wanted to follow through with it. If not, we do have a motion and a second on board, unless you want to.
Can I make one point on discussion before we vote?
Discuss away.
I guess, I think it's worth distinguishing here, regardless of where the vote goes, that this, while, this house, while having a number of historic forms, because it was, like you said, pulled out of the 1910 Sears catalog, it is a non-contributing structure, so I don't think a vote in the affirmative to approve it would necessarily set a precedent that any historic structure can have a port cochere tacked on to the very most forward element of the home. And we should be clear about that, if that's where we're going.
I don't have my helpers here to help me figure out which button. If I may, I just, this is a point, just to address Robin's concern here about how we can explain to her and the staff for why we may not agree with the staff. I've probably said this a lot, but just to make it clear, what we have before us are guidelines. It's not like we have laws or statutes, laws passed by the Metropolitan Council. What we have are guidelines to help us reach a fair decision. So I think that when we can deviate from the guidelines, when we think we have the discretion to do so, and that our decision is fair, considering all the circumstances present. So I think that, I would like to add that to help you and the staff understand why we can go this direction.
Thanks, Chris.
Just note that I disagree with that analysis a little bit, and if I will vote in favor, it's because I think it does meet the guidelines for some different reasons. I don't like to say that we deviate from the guidelines. I think the guidelines are, there's a lot of room for interpretation, and we're working within them and not deviating or disregarding them based on equity or other considerations. At least, that's my personal approach.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Let's put it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, do you mind doing your hands, so I can get a good vote there of ayes for me? One, two, three, and can I get a vote of the nays? One, two, three. Well, I'm gonna...
Do you have one?
Yeah, one abstention. Okay, I'm going to vote no to, so let's put it back up to revote.
For further discussion, I think, and the applicant may need to weigh in here, this is, I mean, this is a, I think, if that dimension is correct, appears it is, there's 12 feet between the edge of the house and the property line. I'm curious if pushing a port cochere further back from the front of the house would even meet the applicant's needs. It seems that the applicant can speak for themselves, but it seems that with the inset and the porch that's created to allow the door swing and to stay undercover and walk in the front of the house, there's a lot of things about a port cochere that make it make sense, to just have a covered place to park your car, I don't think is the intent, but certainly, I don't want to speak for the applicant.
If you don't mind, we'll open public, just for you to answer that question. Do you need him to restate the question, or?
Can I just, I'm a builder, too, so it is tight. The gable on the front, I agree there might be a different way. I mean, if you all have a suggestion, I would hip that, so it better matches some of the contributing roof lines on the house. That's one suggestion, to kind of tone down, I guess, the look or the appearance from the front. It is tight, and that's why we had to step it forward, that 18 inches was to get some coverage. Is it, you know, you could live with it if it were flush to the porch roof, doesn't fully cover the vehicle. You know, it's a minivan, is the vehicle we're attempting to cover. Got a significant investment in, with the Hackberry tree windshield wiper fluid, go through a lot of that, because of the birds. You know, covering, it's really, you know, we've had a lot of rain, the weather's not been great. Having the vehicle fully covered was the intent, but I see some of your concerns. Maybe a hip roof would help take care of that.
But, and maybe straight to the point, if the car were pulled forward such that the door couldn't swing into the carve-out of the steps in the existing porch, is that even a workable scenario in terms of the dimensions and the widths?
It makes it really tight. Hence this, I mean, we've walked it off.
Well, I suspect you wouldn't pull the car forward, you'd keep the car where it is here. It's not the car that we're approving, it's the structure, and the back of the car would just, it's not the undercover.
Yeah, I understand. I guess, I mean, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about three feet, I'm talking about, you know, 13 feet, in terms of something that is, and I don't know whether three feet or 13 feet, you know, I'm asking about possibilities here. 13 feet, the port cochere on itself, just to cover the car, it'd make any sense if you gotta then walk back out into the rain to get in the front porch, and I don't see any side entrance here, so, you know, I just wanted to, I didn't want to suggest something that was ridiculous, or that, you know, would give them approval for something that wouldn't make any sense to build.
Well, first, any more questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. You have one?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, my only, even though it's non-contributing, I still think the prominence of it, I kind of like it pushed back some, but that's why I was following that lead that was going on, so that's just my personal feeling about how it would look on the building. Yeah, I would say further back would really work, but I could live with it just not being the most prominent thing sitting out.
In terms of prominence, is it, the roof line and the columns, or mostly just the columns? If the columns were pushed back, would that make a difference? Because then, they could still get the same cover, but maybe it would reduce the prominence to push the columns back somehow? Just a thought.
Yeah, I would be amenable to even that gesture, but just...
I think if you look, if you want to take a clue from the historic examples that were presented, and without being, knowing other examples, if the porch rack continues, it appears that there are some examples that are shown here, where the porch rack is a continuous item, so you wouldn't even necessarily move the one column, you would build another sort of end wall or end column, very similar to the examples that are presented here, and have a continuous roof line, a continuation of the porch roof line would be something I think you could lean on if this, you know, if that were the direction you took, and the guidelines, this not being the most forward piece of the house. To me, that was just, that's a big one.
Does everybody, you want to make a motion on that? Yeah, or does anybody want to make a motion? We need a motion from one way or the other.
Do you have a motion on the, oh, okay.
We voted down the motion.
I'm sorry, I got to catch up.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the application with the condition that the porch rack continues across, such that the port cochere, sorry about that, such that the port cochere does not extend forward beyond the front of the existing porch, and that the form reads as a part of the porch.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Was that clear? Was the condition clear?
Yeah, yeah, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I've just got a question. I mean, do we ask them to then come back and work with staff on how that might be accomplished?
I think they'll have to resubmit to staff anyways, for staff's approval, and if staff disagrees with it or doesn't think...
I just want to make sure that we're looking, actually, okay.
Yeah, and if staff doesn't agree with the way they've done that, they'll bring it back to us. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think we have a majority at that time. Okay, motion carries.
1410 Lillian Street is an application for single-family infill, a detached accessory dwelling unit, and a setback reduction for the infill. The applicant is in agreement with all the conditions that staff is asking for, so in the interest of time, unless there's specific concerns or questions from the commissioners, or unless there's somebody here who wanted to comment on it from the public, I won't present the entire project, and just say that we recommend approval of the infill, the setback determination, and the detached accessory dwelling unit with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay, great. Any questions to staff, anyway? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to say anything regarding the project?
I don't think the applicant is here. Oh, you are.
Good. I'm Brent Hunter with Van Pond Architect at 1200 Division Street, Suite 101, Nashville, Tennessee, and we accept and agree with all of the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Any questions to applicant?
One, just one quick one. It looks like you're not more than 30, on the porch, front porch wrap, where it's kind of a third brick, or just a small little sort of brick piece there, if the, I think it would look very different if you were required to put a full railing in, and before that determination, if that determination were made, once inspector comes out, that certainly the staff have some input in what that might look like, so that we don't get a 30-inch brick wrap at the porch, would be the only concern, I guess, that that would be, certainly a metal railing that were more open would be appropriate, and I don't think it would need to come back here, it just would need to have somebody look it over so it doesn't have to be undone. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay, go through the holes. Yeah, okay, thank you. Open public hearing, anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Any more discussion, real quick? Any more discussion? Okay, shoot.
I'll move, we approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
1315 Lillian Street is an application for the construction of a one-and-a-half-story infill on a lot, on a vacant lot. Again, the applicant is in agreement with all of the staff's conditions, so unless there's specific questions or concerns, I won't present the full project in the interest of time, but just so that we recommend approval with the conditions laid out in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Any questions to staff? Okay, thank you. First applicant, would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project? No applicant? Okay, open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion? Motion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation, 1315 Lillian.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Similarly, 0 Douglas Avenue is the current address of, between 1538 and 1540 Douglas Avenue. This is an application for new construction, infill. The applicant has been notified of the conditions, and they have agreed to them. So unless there are any questions, I will say that staff recommends approval.
Okay.
With conditions.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions to Paul? You're going faster than I can make my own computer work here. Okay, yeah, that was on Douglas Avenue. Okay, is the applicant here and like to speak? Okay.
I'm Brent Hunter with Van Pond Architect, and we accept the staff recommendations, and we'll adjust the plans accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicant? All right, thanks again. Open public hearing, anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing.
Move approval with staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Should I just stay up here? 1718 Greenwood Avenue, the current house is non-contributing and has been approved for demolition. This application is for new construction of a two-family residence, elevations seen In the same as previous cases, the applicant has agreed to the conditions, and so staff recommends approval with conditions.
All right.
Can you back up a moment to the grading plan? I'm sorry. It appears that the lot is sloping off to the back, to the rear, and it's an awfully tall crawl space, unnecessarily tall crawl space, at least in the front of the house, and that the project might be improved if we were to adjust the grades and not have it set up maybe so tall from the front. The reality of the construction of it, it may end up that way anyways, but that would be a comment. Granted that it slopes from, or at least in the drawings, appears to slope from one side of the other, if you back up again to the grading plan with existing grades, that may in fact be the case once it's constructed, but certainly that would be a request of the applicant, that they minimize the height of the front basement walls, or not basement, but crawl space walls.
It's two foot eight now, about grade. Yeah, and it's low as rock.
I think, you know, with the lot sloping towards the rear, you don't have as many...
It looks like it slopes about five feet approximately, but just making a guess.
Five eight.
Eight feet. Yeah, it is, 34 at nine. Well, 35.
Yeah, it's higher than that.
Yeah.
I don't disagree about the front foundation, seems high.
Okay.
Can I have one question?
Yeah.
This might be pretty obvious to the staff, but it's not to me. Is the recommendation to increase the porch by six foot deep?
It is to, the porch as drawn is, I don't know how it's in here, how, but it's shorter than that, and so my recommendation, our recommendation was to make a more accommodating porch.
And is that due to guidelines?
In the guidelines, that porches traditionally should be that deep, or...
That came about so that you have somewhat of a usable porch, instead of, once you get thinner than six feet, it's not really usable for a chair or anything, and it kind of takes on this fake Disneyfied porch look, and so that's why you've always required at least six feet in depth, so that it's a usable porch.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's worth noting that, you know, Ben had it reversed there, but if you look at it, I think it's maybe in part, because if you look at the rear elevation, there's, it doesn't seem to account for the change in grade, it's still four or five, maybe blocks high, so I guess I'd suggest if we're going to go ahead and approve it, there's maybe an added condition that the, that the foundation is, height is reduced to the extent practical with the, you know, the grade.
Let's, oh, Paul's gone. Well, let's make sure there's no other body wants to speak on it, real quick. Is applicant here? Okay, open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Okay, we can discuss, or we can make a motion based on that?
Well, I wanted to make sure that we didn't necessarily, the motion didn't include the condition that we reduce the height of the foundation wall as much as possible, because that would take it all the way to the ground, and we always want the porch as raised, but...
Right. I think practically, you can't, well, I don't say can't, you create a bathtub sort of situation, you've got a minimum clearance within the crawl space proper, that dirt to wood is, there's a minimum distance there, so it's not practical to get it much lower than that, but certainly to make it greater than it needs to be, we certainly want to minimize that.
Minimize it, yeah.
Maybe staff already has it covered with condition three, that the finished floor height needs to be consistent with the historic structures, so maybe we don't want to tinker with it too much beyond that, because...
That's true. So, that's a good question, Robin. With that condition, can we assume that the staff would, A, verify, we're not certain that the drawings reflect the true grades out there, and then B, ultimately, what they're building is appropriate? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, good, a motion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
215 Scott Avenue is an application for demolition of this non-contributing house and new construction of a two-family residence on the site. Staff has... Staff has, the applicant has agreed to the conditions and staff recommends approval of this application.
Okay, so this is just a demolition, oh, it is construction too, okay. All right, any questions for Paul? All right, is the applicant here, or they'd like to come forward? All right.
2550 Meridian Boulevard, Franklin, 37067, I believe. Just here to answer questions, I guess, so.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? And you did agree, since you're here, you can say you agree to all the staff recommendations?
Yes, that's correct. We agree with all the staff recommendations.
Okay. All right, doesn't seem like we have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion? More motion?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So is this 1111 McKinney? Or 0111?
I think zero is the current assigned address, similar to 0 Douglas previously, but 1111 is the eventual. This is also an application for infill of a two-family, excuse me, two-story, two-family unit on the lot. There are minimal conditions on this application, but staff finds that it meets the guidelines and recommends its approval with those conditions. And I don't know if the applicant is, the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Any questions to Paul?
Surrounding two-story homes near this home?
Yes. About, on the next block, just a few doors down, there are several.
Do you mind going back to the picture? Yes, that one. What's on the other, on the right, to the right of the lot? Is there anything?
It's another, I don't know if it's a non-contributing or contributing, but it's another small one-story home.
It is just this one level, like, maybe like this one that's on the left?
Yes, everything on this block face is that one and one and a half stories, but then just across the street, you have a, I apologize, I can't remember if it was a school or church, and a parking lot, and then the next block over, it gets a little more diverse with one-story and two-story homes.
On the next block?
Right, on the next block. So even though you don't have them on this particular block, you do have that civic building across the street and parking lot, and so we thought in this case, a two-story would be appropriate.
Okay. I just wanted to find out what the block looked like.
More questions for Paul?
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Susan Hager, Susan A. B. Hager, Architecture, 1205 Meridian Avenue, 37216.
Any questions to the applicant? And you're okay with the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion? Motion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1012 Granada Court.
We like seeing you get up and down, Paul.
It's good exercise.
Yes.
1012 Granada Court. 1010, next door to this, is currently under construction, was approved a couple months back. Staff has approved demolition of this non-contributing house, so the application is for new construction of a residence on the site. In a similar presentation, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines, the conditions, the applicant is, has agreed to them, and unless there are questions?
Any questions to Paul? Okay, thanks Paul. Is applicant here, or they'd like to speak regarding this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Lynn Taylor, residential designer, and if you have any questions, so we agree to, I think it's okay.
This is another one where it looks like we might have a relatively high foundation. Is that, it looks like it may be the result of the grade and...
Yes, it's existing grade. Those lots have kind of been rough. The one next door is sloping down, and we've shoved it into the ground, back in the back right corner. I believe Tim Walker met with the builders, and he kind of helped set that. So, like, the back right corner may be one block course out, or two, and then I've plotted those points along the house, so that's kind of what it is, existing as it is, without changing anything.
And we have the condition from staff that they're inching to the finished floor relative to the other historic homes.
Thanks Lynn. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Any discussion? Or motion?
Move approval with staff recommendation, and I guess I would, as the builder, it appears the builder is here, to the extent that as they're excavating, you know, the footing, that can be, every effort that's reasonable can be made to minimize how, you know, how tall the base of it is, given that, actually, this grade appears more severe than the previous project we've gone on at all.
Okay, thanks Ben. A second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 913 Pettway Avenue?
This one is off the agenda.
Okay. 912 Apex Street?
912 Apex Street is an application for infill on a vacant lot and for a setback determination. It's an odd-shaped lot, and because of that, they are requesting a rear setback that's less than the base zoning. Again, the applicant is in agreement with the staff's conditions, and staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. The applicant is here. If you have questions for him or me.
Could you describe the setback determination?
Sure, let me just go to the page. So the rear of the building will be more than 30 feet from the rear left corner of the lot, which meets the setback, the rear setback should be 20 feet, but because of the rear of the lot is angled, the Ellington Parkway is right behind here, the rear setback will only be 17 feet at the back right corner. So it's just three feet off from what it should be, and again, it's because of the angle of the lot, and the lot is angled because of the Ellington Parkway in its backyard. So there's no properties behind it affecting another house behind it.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions to Melissa? For Melissa? All right, thanks Melissa. And applicant is here? Would you like to come forward and say how you're good?
Hi, Bob Potter, Cudzu Homes, 314 Forest Bend Drive.
Okay, and you're okay with all the...
I'm happy to comply with any and all requests.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Okay, thanks for coming. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Motion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, 905, 108, 113, and 116 Ransom Avenue?
This is technically four applications for infill on the development site that was formerly the ransom school site. Just to refresh the commissioner's memory, 11 lots have been created from the former ransom school site. The commission to date has approved three designs for houses, but only one house has been constructed to date, and that's Lot 3, which is kind of the gray shadowed one. The lots before you today are the ones that are marked with dots. They're all interior lots, they don't face, they don't have sod facades that face either Byron Avenue or Richardson Avenue. We've worked closely with the applicant, and they are in agreement with all of our conditions, and we recommend approval with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation. The applicant is also here.
Okay, any questions to Melissa?
Does each, each house have to be bought for us, because what, we just approved the site plan?
Yes, in the past, we've just approved the development plan, so we do have to approve the design, just to make sure all of the details and forms and size and, you know, everything meets the design guidelines. The applicant can speak more to this than I can, but I believe next month, and then probably in April, you'll see the remaining houses.
Okay, thanks Melissa. What, is there any more questions?
Since we just love pictures, but next time when another comes for approval, could we get a picture of a finished, oh, no, I mean a finished picture? I mean, this is Lot number three.
Oh, the one that's...
Oh, sure, yeah, it's in the, it should be in the staff recommendation towards the back. I don't have it in the presentation. So you can kind of see, it's a Google view, so it's not probably the best photo. But next month, I will make sure for our presentation.
Just because we love pictures, thank you.
I'll make sure to include one.
Okay, is the applicant here, would you like to speak regarding this project?
Hi, I'm Champ Webb, representing Barlow Builders. It's 1804 Williamson Court, Suite 205 in Brentwood, Tennessee. And we accept all the suggestions for the committee, so I do have like a streetscape kind of for our plans for the whole neighborhood, if we wanted to look at it or just take a glance at it real quick, too. So it's not a PDF, so, but we're just kind of, sure, just kind of our concept, obviously there's ones that have been, that we're submitting to be approved, and then some for the next, in March and April, as Melissa stated, so.
I don't know how y'all want to do this, but we're just, should I just get in front and hold it? Here it is, can y'all see it? Hmm? Bana. Bana, oh, Lord, I'm Bana. All right, I'm now through being Bana White.
Are the, is the rest of the developments pretty forthcoming, or is it, because I know it took a long time from the first one?
We are, we're working on everything to submit three more plans for Monday, and then the remaining on April, for the April month supplemental, so.
Okay, great.
And it'll be some variations of this, we're still working and fine tuning and adjustments, and taking suggestions from Melissa and things that we need to do architecturally, so.
And this is a new builder? So that, so they are not responsible for the lag? So I think they're, they're jumping in now and getting...
Right, we didn't do the original plan, the Lot 3 that was existing, so we're doing the following 10, but...
They're not responsible, period, for what's previous.
Right.
Okay. All right, any further questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing.
Move approval with staff's recommendation.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, Commissioner Gee has recused himself for the last one, which is 1311 and 1313 Fifth Avenue North.
This is another case where the applicant has agreed to all the conditions, so we won't be presenting unless you have some questions. It's a multi-family development in Germantown.
Okay. Thanks Robin. Is the applicant here, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio, 209 10th Avenue South, Suite 425, 37203. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation, and I'm here with the client representative, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Whoops, sorry. Any questions to the applicant? Okay. Thanks a lot, seeing none. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Any motion or any discussion?
I have a question for the staff. So we are approving the site plan as well as, we're approving the entire development plan, or just the...
The entire project. To the site plan, the elevations, and I will say too, that the applicant worked really hard with the neighborhood as well, to make sure that they were comfortable with it. But it meets current zoning, so they don't need an SP, they don't need to do a double process like you've seen for some other projects, so you're today, you know, if you agree, approving the entire project.
I'm just trying to recall our discussions from the previous designs like this, and it seemed like green space was a big one, and just number of units per lot, I mean, per site, is that...
We don't regulate the number of units. That's based on...
That's planning commission, right.
Yeah, right, and that's, this is the number of units that they have the right to build right now, today. They're not changing the zoning, the base zoning. The green space, I think, is, has been a little more important for the more cottage development. This is more of a townhouse-type development, at least how it faces the street, which is prevalent in Germantown. Obviously, this wouldn't work in most of our other districts, but it does, we felt like fit in well with Germantown.
Can you put the, like, the site plan, not the site plan, but a wider view, neighborhood, sort of the neighborhood environs, this Google street map, if you have one? Does one exist?
We don't have access to the internet.
Uh-huh.
Where are you going with that?
Oh, I just wanted to see it in the context of, I'm pretty sure I know where it is, but...
We don't have access to the internet, sorry.
No problem.
Fifth and Monroe?
Yeah, I mean, I thought I knew where it was, I just wanted to make sure that I knew where it was. Very good.
All right.
Just one more comment, too, because I think we're looking at, the question of Richard was asking, you know, it sounds like you were asking maybe if we would see this again, right? Is that kind of where you were going with that, too?
That, and just being consistent with the comments that we've had before when we've seen these.
And to that end, I'll say, based on where this is, the rear of the lot sits higher than the front. It's bounded on two sides by alleys, so it's not a common, this isn't a terribly common occurrence in the neighborhood, where you have the intersection of that, and so really, it's viewed from the side, A2 is viewed from the side, and A1 partially next to the lone historic home on the street. And so then, the front facade is kind of what's seen from the, from the public view, and the rear, while, you know, having some green space is not unlike some cottage-type developments that have been, some that this board approved, and then others that were built, one of the first that was built in town, so I think it, in terms of fitting into the neighborhood, or being appropriate to what, what kind of the expectation is for the district, this certainly seems to fit that.
One more comment on that as well, that, looking at the elevations of the plans, they're similar to construction that is almost across the street, right Ben? In terms of a consistency through the neighborhood?
Yeah, well, and I think, yeah, the diagonal corner at Monroe, at the Root Project...
Fifth and Monroe.
Yeah. Not unlike that, and the townhouses that extend all the way down from 5th to 6th on
Okay. I think we're, I lose track. Are we at the motion yet? I think so. Okay. Motion?
I move to approve for staff recommendation.
Okay. Second?
Sir?
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. No SP reviews, no administrative actions, no other business?
Just wanted to remind everybody about the Old House Fair this weekend, Saturday, March 7. I mean, this weekend, next weekend.
Next weekend.